Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this West Sacramento State Council. West Sacramento, we have developments in West Sacramento's authority. We have no closing session today, so we're going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Agents. And James Wong, would you mind?
I'm sorry.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. All right, the first item on the agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. So this is a time when folks have general comments to the council on items that aren't on the agenda. The agenda items, we've got cards back there. If you'd like to speak on anything in particular, grab a card and bring it up to the clerk, and we'll bring you up at that time. So are there any folks in the audience who'd like to talk at this time? All right, seeing none, on to the next item, which is Agenda Item 1B, Council Communications and Assignments. Are there any reports out?
I do.
Councilmember Desma.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple of items to report upon, and I'm sorry, I'm just still getting my agenda open. But this past Monday, we had a meeting of the Yellow County Transportation District in Woodland, and a couple of things were on the agenda. Most notably, though, was our city staff. I think Denix is here, and Sarah gave an update to the rest of the district regarding our mobility action plan, and more specifically around our vote around recommending VIA as the vendor of choice for our new transit pilot that we have coming out. And I want to thank them for coming out and briefing the district. This has become a little bit of a, as we go out with this pilot, we're pretty enthused about it. I'm sure you all know, you voted on this at the last meeting. And the rest of the county is watching this very closely. They thought it was a very innovative idea, a very innovative action we took. There is some concern, I'm not going to be in all honesty with the district, about what this could mean to future transit lines and how we might share costs, impacted the rest of the county agencies that are participating in it. But I've reassured them, our goal is not to supplant transit, the current yellow lines, but actually complement them. We see this as just another option, and that's what the whole pilot is for. I also welcome them to participate more actively with city staff. City staff was very open about sharing information as we hit certain milestones with the other agency transit directors or city managers, so they could see what we're doing, learn what we're doing, maybe at some point they can look to it as another program they can use. So again, I want to thank Denix and Sarah for coming out and briefing them. I thought it was a very good discussion, lots of open dialogue, and encouraging the rest of the district to continue that. So anyway, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anything further? All right.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I do have two reports. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm going to defer my reports to our December meeting. I still am recovering from my vocal cord surgery, which I think has been successful, but I have to have voice conservation, so I just am trying to be as concise as possible tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then on to Agenda Item 1C, Council Appointments, Reappointments, and Removals from City and City Boards of Commissions. There are none tonight. So we'll move on to the next item, which is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing King's Restaurant for over 50 years of business in West Sacramento, and this will be presented by Councilmember Roscoe.
I'll move adoption of this item.
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, passes.
That's the first mobile vote we've had.
Thank you.
King's Restaurant on 1500 West Capitol Avenue was opened in 1960 by Chu Hui Lam, who came from Canton, China. Twenty years later, in 1980, the business started to make dim sum for the residents of West Sacramento and the outlying regions of Davis and Sacramento. King's soon became known as a local place for enjoying breakfast or lunch or dim sum on the weekends, and it became a well-populated family hangout, especially on Sundays, when my family would go and enjoy dim sum there. Many of us will remember the King's iconic red and white sign we see behind me. It's a fixture around along West Capitol, and it reads "King's Restaurant since 1960. Dim Sum Cantonese Cuisine: A Taste of Hong Kong." I'd like to say that the Sacramento Kings have their place, and the West Sacramento Kings have our place, and that will be now and forever. At the urging of family, King's owner and cook Chu Hui Lam retired at the age of 93 years old, closing the restaurant on October 29, 2017, after serving the last meal to a packed house. I stand here alongside Mr. Lam's family, and I hold here a proclamation from the City of West Sacramento and our city council. And we would like to recognize Mr. Lam and his family for the contributions to West Sacramento that you've given us for many, many years, 57 years. We will miss you. This proclamation ends with, "Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Council and the City of West Sacramento does hereby recognize King's Restaurant for its delicious food, incredible longevity as a West Sacramento institution, and we send our best wishes to Chu Hui Lam and your family as you enjoy retirement, sir." So I'd like to ask the family to please join me and Mr. Lam as I present to you this proclamation.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you very much, Mr. Lam and family, for all you've done in our community, and for the many meals you've served to many West Sacramentans and outside of West Sacramento, folks have come to enjoy your restaurant. It is quite a treasure you've created on our corner of West Capitol, and as West Sacramento looks back long before there was Broderick's and Burgers &amp; Brew and all the eateries we know today, there was King's that was there for families of West Sacramento, along with other institutions in our lore, as the Club Pheasant, as Emma's, as Whitey's. And so we're super proud of all you've done in our community, and I wish you well in your retirement.
Yeah, thank you very much for all that you've given to West Sacramento. And I was speaking with you before this, you have a number of your family that are West Sacramento, grew up in West Sacramento, and have been part of West Sacramento for a very, very long time. It's sad to see your restaurant close, but at 93 years old, I think you probably deserve a retirement at this point. And I understand that until that time, you were working 366, 67 days a year, maybe taking one day off here or there. It's very fortunate to have a business like yours in West Sacramento, and thank you very much for providing the enjoyment that your restaurants provided over the years. And thank you to your family, too, for your support. All right, then on to the consent agenda. We have Items 3 through 11. Are there any items, any council members would like to pull for separate consideration? I just have one. This is Agenda Item 5. So this is Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, everybody.[653.16][653.16](laughter) West Sacramento City, I still stay here. I'm staying in the Norfolk Avenue 1505.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, so this is Agenda Item 5, Consideration of Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 17-17, Amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code relating to Cannabis Manufacturing into Commercial Cultivation and Wholesale Logistics Distribution Transportation Facilities. So the only reason why I pulled this is just to kind of set the context. We've got a couple of items coming up later, and what this ordinance does is sets the framework to allow the development agreements and so forth, that we're looking at the cannabis manufacturing, to be put in place. And can you just basically explain the framework, because I know a lot of people, this may have looked at this item, but just kind of the general framework of what this ordinance is going to do?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, and the members of City Council. Yes, this ordinance was in place as we had several items coming forth to the Planning Commission and ultimately City Council, and so each of the projects collectively were put together in this ordinance, rather than each of them individually coming forth and relying on the one before them to go through the process and be adopted and approved prior to them coming forward. So each of the uses that are before you tonight following were all part of the Ordinance 17-17, and all participated in that. So this is sort of holistically approved, would adopt if it were approved, all of those businesses would be able to move forward, because 17-17 would be what they would have done individually to move forward. We just simply did this separately, so each of them could be approved on their own merits, as opposed to relying on one or the other.
All right, well, thank you. Any questions or comments on that item? Looks like there is a motion on consent?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes. Thank you very much. All right, on to Item Number 12. This is the Continued Public Hearing and Consideration of Resolution 17-73, Amending the Book of Fees to Adopt Fees for Various Regulatory Activities, Products, and/or Services.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Nattish Sharma with the City Finance Division. I'd like to introduce Mr. Rob Strange. He's going to go over the presentation of the amended book of fees related to false alarm, and will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Nattish, Mayor Protem, council. After the last hearing on this matter, we were asked to kind of reconvene on this item and look for options specifically around, initially around, the fact that we had initially proposed a fee at the second false alarm, and there was interest in having that retained as no fee. And so we went back and reassessed and found options to address that and come to that conclusion, maintaining no fee for false alarms for the first and second response. And then are proposing in this new recommendation to council, an increase from the $200 amount at third, fourth, and fifth alarms, and adjusting those up to $250 at the third alarm, $300 at the fourth alarm, and $350 at the fifth alarm. In doing so, the goal is actually for compliance with proper alarm usage. We send two officers to each of these false alarms, and in so doing, that takes away their opportunity to do proactive policing in the city of West Sacramento. It also hopefully deters that bad alarm behavior, and also shrinks the gap in the costs that we incur, that possibly gets incurred and passed on to the general fund by our response to essentially what is not a police function, a safety function, because it is a false alarm. So in doing this and coming to that recommendation, again, it first and foremost tries to address the alarm behavior, but then secondly, also serves to shrink the gap, that deficit gap in the cost of administering this. The other thing that I would like to point out is the appeal process. And the appeal process, we also seek to have a fee for the appeal process to cover administrative costs, but I wanted to really point out that the fact that we address that also, that if somebody successfully appeals to their alarm, that that is refunded to them. And the alarm appeal process also gives us the ability to use discretion and compassionately use discretion where appropriate.
All right, questions or comments? Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I initially had expressed some concern around the first iteration of the Book of Fees, largely because I saw that there was a proposed change from having first and second alarms being historically free to now having a fee for second false alarms. While I believe there should be a fee, I felt that the fee should be placed on people who have exhibited repeat offenses, and not act as a deterrent for folks who may be of modest means but really want to protect their home. And if an accident were to happen one time, now they're on the verge of facing a very stiff penalty. Through this process, I, for the first time, understood now that we have the same fee structure for residential as we do business. However, it appears that business entities are the most prolific culprits when it comes to repeat offenses. So down the road, as we look at the Book of Fees in the future, I think it might be helpful to see if whether or not a different tiered system would work, but for the purposes of what we're here for today, I think that putting the fee on the third false alarm does reach the objective of trying to deter repeat offenses. While it seems high, and I did, the shock effect did initially get me, I am appreciative that the appeal process is in place, because then someone could make a case and hopefully appeal if, in fact, there were some circumstances that were beyond their control that must have triggered the third alarm. But I do understand that the fees are necessary in order for us to recover the costs, which are expensive for our officers to go from home to home or business to business in order to respond to these calls. So I do appreciate the effort, and I do want to reiterate that in jurisdictions around West Sacramento, it's especially, for example, I'm looking at Elk Grove, I'm looking at Rancho Cordova in Sacramento, all of which have been consistent with our previous first and second alarms being free, and I just want to stay consistent. There are certain places that, due to the age of the home or activity within, accidents will happen. At the same time, you know, third, fourth, fifths, I think, unless you make a case otherwise, they should be penalized.
I just wanted to echo one part of Councilmember Roscoe's, which is the look at the commercial versus residential, because I think that's something that we can look at down the road in our Book of Fees to make sure that we are being equitable in terms of who carries the burden of the most false alarms. So, and they should be able to pay for that, and they are going to, right? So theoretically, they're going to pay. But again, the way I look at it is, we have a cost that you bear and we bear every time we send somebody out, and that has to be paid for. So I'm much more, at this point, glad that we are able to move forward in a way that we can all feel good about the fee structure, as well as making sure we all set the actual costs, because I think that's the part that this is about, is really is making sure every time we have officers go out, it costs us something as entity, and that's an important part, because you are taking away from proactive duties, maybe somewhere else. And so getting the right behavior is part of this issue, but it's also making sure we can recover costs and keep our officers where they hopefully should be, and that is by showing proactively. So I appreciate everyone's work on this to kind of get it to a place where we can, I think, move on. And, but I would ask, in future evaluations of our Book of Fees, is maybe look at that construct of commercial versus residential.
Absolutely.
All right, I think the only question I had was, it's now, it's a first alarm, no fee, second alarm, no fee, and then a big jump to $250. So one of my concerns would be to make sure folks know the schedule. So after the first alarm, that there's some very obvious publicity or some very obvious information that's given to them, saying, "Look, next one is going to be, it's going to be zero," but after that's going to start ratcheting up, just so they're really aware of that. It doesn't look like that's a huge problem based on statistics, since most of these are coming from commercial, but, you know, from 0 to 250, there's going to be a sticker shock, I think, on that.
Yeah, and I believe, I will have to confirm, but I'm almost certain that there is notification made through the alarm vendor that they receive a mailing that indicates that they've had a first alarm, then a second alarm, and what those subsequent penalties will be. And I just would like to point out that though the 200 to 250, it's actually moving from 200 to 250, it is a sticker shock even moving from 0 to 200. We were trying to adjust without going overboard, just to really adjust appropriately and proportionally to the cost.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so this Agenda Item requires a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing. So any folks who'd like to speak on this item, please come up. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and back to council for further deliberations or motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. All right, on to Item Number 13, which is a public hearing and first reading of Ordinance 17-19, approving a development agreement with Gold Mountain Distribution at 3939 West Capitol Avenue, Suite C, for wholesale cannabis logistics, distribution, and transportation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, and members of council. Gold Mountain Distribution is proposing a cannabis distribution facility at 3939 West Capitol Avenue, Suite C. This is the area along West Capitol Avenue that is west of I-80. Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit for this proposed use at the October 19 Planning Commission meeting. In addition to the conditional use permit approved by Planning Commission, the applicant is also required to get a development agreement approved, which is what is before you tonight. The development agreement, under your consideration tonight for Gold Mountain Distribution, is substantially the same as previous development agreements that have come before council for past cannabis-related businesses. There are a few key provisions in the development agreement. The first is a safety and security plan. The applicant will be required to work with the police department on providing this safety and security plan. Another key provision, quarterly payments to the city based on their gross sales. So for distribution, it's 2.5% of their gross sales are required to be paid to the city quarterly. And then also, no signage on the business or on any vehicles that are transporting product. In keeping with council's previous direction and the approved cannabis-related municipal codes that were approved earlier tonight, the recommendation by staff is to approve the development agreement via the implementing ordinance 17-19. With that, I'll close my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, and the applicant is also in attendance to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, any questions at this time? Seeing none, okay, thank you. All right, it looks like we have one request to speak on this item. It's Michael Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Michael Ramirez. I'm the co-founder of Gold Mountain Distribution, and in the audience, I have my co-founder, who is Ariana Tibbetts. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce ourselves, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. Please bear with me, though, I am fighting a cold, so.
I actually have a question. Thank you, sir, and thank you for joining us tonight. Could you please explain to the folks that are watching out, and they're from their homes, what specifically Gold Mountain does? It says wholesale cannabis logistics, distribution, and transportation. Distribution and transportation seems pretty straightforward, but what are logistics?
That's just part of that. It's dealing with the actual planning of the movements of transportation, distribution. So what our company does, it's pretty much the middle person between farms and either manufacturing, or farms and dispensaries. The important part that we provide is that we provide the collection of state tax, both from dispensaries and along with that, from the farms, but we also are in charge of the mandated testing of cannabis. It's really important, and it's much like a third party. So we would actually take all the product from a farm, store it, test it, and have control of it, take custody of that, so it could be no tampering with. Once it's certified, it could go to sale. If it doesn't, then we have a process for destruction.
There are a lot of folks out in West Sacramento who might have an impression about the business that might not be accurate. Can you address issues that, such as odors or proximity to neighborhoods specifically related to your business?
Correct. So our business is 600 feet, more than 600 feet away from any residence or any state-required public facility that we would have to have that. Also, we're not open to the public. We have a very high secure, we have a high-security plan, a secure security plan, that we've already established with law enforcement, that with their approval, we'll work hand-in-hand with them to ensure that it is at the proper level that they want, so that we do not have public coming in and out. It's a very restricted location that we have, and even entrance into the building, such as we follow all the laws where no one under 21 could be allowed. There will be nobody but employees allowed, unless there are a vendor, and then there's a secure room for them. The area where we contain the product, nobody's allowed back there but employees, unless it's a state official or city official that wants to do an inspection.
Will there be any odorous emissions coming from the building?
No, there will not. So there are preventive methods that we'll use, that are called air scrubbers, that will be allowed there, or that will be placed there, although in distribution, by the time the product gets to us, because we're not a processing plant, or where they actually process it, dry it, the odor is very minimal. But for safekeeping, we will have all our rooms, including the whole building, will have air scrubbers. You will not be able to smell any odor, even next door to us, the businesses next door.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, then back to council for further deliberations or a motion. Oh, have we done a public hearing on this? Oh, right, public hearing, okay. So let's open up the public hearing. This is a time when any folks in the audience who would like to get up and talk can come up and say a few words on this item.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would also ask that maybe we remind folks going into the rest of the agenda items, the process around requesting to speak. It's been sort of proceduralized through many meetings to make sure people fill out the yellow forms and all that. Sort of, we didn't, it's a sort of standard practice. While it's a public hearing, I just want to make sure everyone is aware of the process.
Okay, so do we have a...
And time on the clock and all that good stuff.
All right, thank you. All right, yes.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I especially thank Christopher for explaining the procedure. Yes, it's true. It's the first time since standing here. Last time I've been here is receiving my daughter's award. And I'm really concerned about the business. And I'm really concerned about the business. With this allowed, we will be the second city in this region to open, to allow, openly allow, commercial cultivation, and manufacturing and distribution. And that does give me a lot of concern. So I don't want to be casted as a stereotype image. I'm young, I'm not that old, apparently, and I have friends that use marijuana for recreational purpose. But this topic is not about whether recreational marijuana usage is good or not. We voted for that last year, majority of Californians do. This question is that whether our city should take this risk, and become the second city in this region to allow this business. And my personal opinion is no. There's a lot of uncertainties associated with marijuana. If you look up, well, up to now, I think the general public maybe have some different ideas, but if you just type in marijuana, you will find a lot of negative news with this term. Why? We are not in a position, I don't think the city can boldly claim that you will be secure the region from any increased crime rate possibly, or fire risk possibly, that related with the new facility. I'm not saying there's a must, but it's possible. And there's also possible decrease in property values. I don't understand why West Sacramento, a city that I'm proud of, the city that always cast, promote themselves as a green city, the city welcomes a new future, will jump in such a business, that's risky. The whole business actually for itself is risky, according to the California Energy CPA UC's recent report. Because we already, in California, we already produce four times as much that need to be exported, rather than consumed in California. So it's already considered a risky business, I would say, but I'm not in the hands of a businessman. I'm just saying that, from my perspective, there's so many uncertainties. And if there's better chance, we are located so near to capital, the, you know, political center, we are so close to freeways, we could do so many wonderful things. And so far, all I see in West Sacramento, we are doing that, we're heading to that direction. And why do we want to take this business? And looking around, all other cities, Folsom, Rancho Gordoa, a lot of cities go through similar discussions, similar debate, don't they want the money? I think they want it too, but in the end, they hold it on. So I just want to recommend, we take two to three years to see what's going on, and make sure our, we have the law enforcement and regulatory force to make sure, if you want to take this business, we would do it in the right way. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further public comments? Okay, so generally, the rule is we try to keep the comments at three minutes, you'll hear a buzzer go off, and hopefully you'll be able to keep your comments within that time.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council members. Again, my name is Popin. I have been a resident in West Sacramento since 2009. So this is a place I call home, you know? So this is a place where I had my two babies, you know? So they both go to local school, Brideway Island, and they are seven and five. So I'm here for my very first time, presenting my own opinion about this grow business. You know, for a long time, I've been just sort of like looking that as something that other people have been dealing with, it's none of my issues, none of my business. However, right now, I do feel like I need to stand here as a regular resident, okay? I wanted to let people hear what I'm thinking, as a mom of two children. So, so first of all, for the record, okay, I'm not against any medical use of marijuana, that's a whole separate issue. However, we are talking about the marijuana industry. So when we look at the growing cultivation, you know, transportation or distribution, that's a whole industry chain. I'm not sure about the implications here. What does that mean to us, regular residents here? What does that mean to a mom of two children, a seven-year-old daughter and a five-year-old son? So I want everyone here to think about my question, and I do worry about my children. And also, I worry about my home values, you know? So I was being really lucky to buy the home after 2008, you know? And I have been really happy to see my home value appreciating. And I'm sure a lot of you will agree to me, right, on that point? So I don't know the implication of, you know, introducing this whole growing business to our neighborhood, you know? And part of that, you know, I worked for state mental health services for nearly two years, and before that, you know, I worked for state Department of Education as a senior research consultant. I have seen a lot of children, you know, a lot of students, at various grade levels that suffer from this misuse of, you know, marijuana, or whatever, you know? And even for my clients at mental health services, you know, we all know, this is part of common sense, that marijuana is entry-level drug, you know? That will lead you to something even stronger or higher. So implication about that, I think everybody knows that. But again, I want to reiterate my point, as a mom of two children, a seven-year-old and five-year-old, I say no to this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. All right.
So it's amazing you see three Chinese women in a row standing up. My name is Ron Chen, I'm a professor at UC Davis, and I major in supply chain, so I know distribution center logistics, I mean, it's everywhere. My major opinion, I'm not against using recreation, whatever, people they want to use, they use it. I'm against having it in our neighborhood, in this small, very small town. The major reason is because this is still illegal in other states. And California and Colorado, they make it illegal, what happens is that you're going to see a lot of, you know, businesses just growing, and then they are going to export to other states. And because it's illegal in other states, so they have to use cash. And the cash business is such a high-margin business, it's going to attract crime. We don't want, we don't want West Sacramento to become South Sacramento. If anyone who lives here from South Sacramento, I'm sorry I offended you, but the crime rate in South Sacramento is not pleasant. Elk Grove is not pleasant. I hope we keep this community safe. So that's the major reason that I'm against. I mean, regarding the fire, or, you know, the smell, I know people don't like it, but my major concern is about the crime. And another thing is, I'm worried about this getting into the kids, because, I mean, my daughter is in Brideway. And recently, three seventh grade are selling marijuana on campus. And I'm worried, like, you have so many distribution centers in this region, so many employees getting touch of this, and what if, like, the, you know, how to say, the monitoring cost is so high, then you cannot keep track of what is happening, and that gets into our community, and then you're going to see this little city going downward. If you see other cities say no, can we also say no? I mean, we can do many other things, make money, we can think of other ways. We don't have to go to this, I mean, the major reason is because, I mean, it's not like marijuana is a bad thing. It's because it's illegal in other states, therefore, there are a lot of risks, there's gun, violence, crime, and cash, all crime together, and we don't like it. And we don't want, when people speak about West Sacramento, people say, "Ah, that's a city, they profit from drugs." We don't want that. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further comments? All right, that closes the public hearing then, so back to council for deliberations, further questions, comments?
I'll go ahead and make some, a few comments and a few questions, actually, just to start. And I appreciate the comments tonight, thank you for showing up to our meeting, usually we don't have this big a crowd here, so thank you. You know, and I appreciate the Mayor Protem pulling the original item off the consent order, I'm sorry, the consent agenda, bringing that out of the typical order to make sure that we articulate the ordinance that we set forth to, how, the framework that we are, we have implemented as a result of the cannabis industry and legalization of cannabis in California. We've had to make that adjustment for a long time, and I started on council back in 2010, 11. This has been a topic, either through medical marijuana, where there was no legal framework around how we could manage dispensaries and whatever else. But today, we do have a much far greater legal framework to how cities can manage and enforce the laws that it has, and make sure it keeps secure its citizens and can conduct business. I think one of the points that I have made in this debate throughout my nine years here, or, I'm sorry, seven years here in council, has been around, this is not an easy mental adjustment for me. I grew up not really, I have two kids as well, and it's always been no to drugs and everything else, and so this has been a bit of a mental hurdle for me, understanding where we are culturally, where we are as a country, and as a state now legally with marijuana. But we've had to adjust, because the voters of California have said so, and the voters of West Sacramento have said so. Yes, there is still a conflict with the federal government, and that's something that we've had to address. But in my mind, we've had, we've done a couple of things that, again, thanks to Mayor Protem wanting to articulate, how we are kind of going to carry forward. We have jurisdiction over land use, and how we can regulate businesses, individuals at their residences, at their land, and their businesses. We've chosen to use our ordinances to make sure we had development agreements with these entities, to make sure we had agreements, as you heard from the applicant. Yes, he recited some of the things we have asked him, or that he has said they're going to do, but the truth is, is our staff just worked very hard to ask these things of them as they came into our city. We understand that industry, be it cannabis, be it breweries, which are prominent in our, in our town, be it cement factories, be it, you name it, we, this is still very much an industrial town, that we're very hard in each one of those to make sure we try to keep them safe, we try to make sure the land use, traffic impacts, odors, light pollution, we work very hard with each of those to make sure that we do our best to make sure they share the neighborhood in a way that is safe, to the best of our ability, and is conducive to what we do. Again, I have made no qualms about the fact that marijuana and cannabis has sort of been a mental stretch for me, because of my own personal upbringing, and because of the fact I have two kids. But it remains that the voters of this city, and the voters of this state, have said they want it legalized. There's an industry that is asking for to use land, and there's, we have made our adjustments to manage it, to regulate it, with all these things in mind. I'm looking through the staff report and seeing that there will be no customer sales on premises, there will be no signage indicating whatsoever by either a leaf, or any symbol, or any word that will indicate what's in this building. There will be, I think, fencing requirements, security requirements. Our police have inspected this, I think, to the best of their ability and their expertise. And that's, all of that is what we see a result of today. And I'm looking through the development agreement today again, making sure that, for myself, the RTs across the Nigerodot, I'm very confident, staff, because we've been working at this, they've been working at this for some time, did a very good job of making sure a lot of concerns as a neighbor, as a resident, as a, as a business owner, where we can, this industry, if it wants to establish it here, they know the ground rules, and we make sure that they're set. So again, I'm supportive of this, because of the process we went through. I know that's not comfortable for a lot of people, and I truly do understand that. But as, going forward, as we have with other industries that didn't feel comfortable, they have a legal right, to a degree, to this, if they conform to our land use policies, and they conform to everything else. And I want to thank our staff for working super hard on paving some ground, and making sure we, the city residents are, come first and foremost, and making sure we can ensure these things. So again, I just wanted to make sure, my question's the staff, who's taking the lead on this, who's answering questions? Okay. So I notice, yeah, you can get up, it's okay. On, the couple of things on the development agreement that, of course, I can't flip to the page fast enough. I know we had, we did have provisions in there around signage and security, I just want to make sure that the spirit of it was that, should terms of that development agreement be broken, either by, made obvious to us, driving by, to neighbors, whoever else, I mean, those terms are pretty much on us, that we can terminate that agreement if they, if they go outside of, I'm particularly concerned about the security agreements, signage, the provisions in that agreement. Because those are what really are going to keep us feeling okay, that we're not drawing a lot of attention to the business that's there, other than people showing up and doing their job and leaving.
Yeah, that's correct. So the development agreement provides that vehicle to terminate, if it ever should have put up legal signage, or if they don't conform to the safety and security plan, that would be the vehicle to not allow the business to be there.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, I just want to make sure I got those points, thank you very much, and thanks to staff for their work on this.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to thank each of the speakers who came up and expressed themselves before the council tonight. A few months ago, I sat in the same chair as you did, and I reflected a lot of the same emotion and same feelings about having cannabis in this community. This is a community where I too have chosen to live, and I love the complexion of the city, the way it is. And I was very resistant to the idea of introducing any type of business related to cannabis. I've been a prosecutor in this county of Sacramento for the last 13 years. I have prosecuted countless offenders who have been either possession for personal use, or possession for sale of marijuana, furnishing to minors, and I prosecute those with a fervor. So to tell me now that marijuana is legal, and I have to accept it, was a hard pill to swallow. As Councilmember Ledesma mentioned, this happened upon us, and now we have to make moves to adjust. But with that said, I had the opportunity to educate myself, take tours of facilities, and better understand the nature and quality of the businesses that are proposing to be in our community. And I believe Ms. Popin, thank you so much for coming up and speaking. I'm from South Sac, I was born and raised in South Sac, so I know that community, and I've chosen to live in West Sacramento. And I took an oath to make decisions in this city that would be in the furtherance of the public safety and the betterment of this community. And I know your children, my children are six, seven, 11, and 13, and I would never choose to have them born and raised, or living their childhood in an area where I thought there would be odors, or there'd be high crime. Every week, or every meeting we have, one of the top priorities I always speak about is public safety. And I want to make sure that our city is safe by all risks. So that said, these are not the types of businesses that, based on what I've seen, and the education I've received, these are not the kinds of business that would promote hand-to-hand sales, or marijuana getting in the hands of children. Granted, it sounds, many people understand marijuana business to be a retail establishment or a storefront. That's not allowed here. That's not going to be allowed here. What we're, what we're proposing here, or what we're, well, we're not proposing it, what we're considering here, is businesses that would be nondescript, the vehicles would be nondescript, no one would even really know is there. There are no odors, there's no environmental impact, and there's not a significantly high safety risk that we are aware of. And if there were, we would never vote in favor of having such a type of business. We all live here. So I just, I wanted to make that point, that I, you know, I did ask the same questions, and there's no, there's no type of business that immune to risk. Even grocery stores can get burglarized, you know, places that seem pretty benign. But these businesses are taking security measures to protect themselves as well. They don't want- They don't want to invite any unnecessary risk any more than we want to. So they're going to be down low as much as possible. So, you know, I've heard some responses about, you know, the cash-heavy type of business and high-risk marijuana. I just wanted to inform our community that so long as, you know, we are the council in this town and we would never allow our children to be at risk and our community be at risk. So I really want to appreciate your, express my appreciation for your comments and I hope that as we move along with these businesses considerations, we all can come to a common understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandeep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And I too am appreciative to have community members come and share, some of my neighbors come and share your input. As these have come forward to us, I have shared concerns about safety and in fact, I think that's how we shaped this as we're going forward as a city, as the two councilmembers before me who've spoken, to not have signage, to have a security plan in place, to have our PD and our fire, to really be involved in kind of the structure of the safety mechanisms. For me, as the voters approved this and this has come forward to us, I think about West Sacramento and our long history of being a distribution center for lots of different food products and medical products and cement and I think Mr. Ledesma also mentioned some other, others, and we just, I guess, rice and the list is long. So I think we have made some other decisions to not allow dispensaries, to not allow outside growing, that also kind of in the overall kind of perspective in the cannabis industry, we are only, we're keeping this box kind of, I think, pretty small and tight and focused on it, I think because of all of our experiences and also hearing from the community. So while I think we're all struggling this with this, we're doing the best we can in terms of considering zoning that works for, that can work for the city. So I think, I think that's kind of where I land with this one.
Well, thank you.
That was my two minutes for this hour. Sorry. Thanks.
Yeah, since Proposition 64 passed in 2016, in November of 2016, which passed not only in California but in West Sacramento, but we have a mandate from the citizens to do something about this. And part of the, part of the issue is, is the state is going to start licensing, I think, January 1st of next year. And unless the city does something, state's going to do it. So we have an opportunity to control what happens in our city according to what our city residents want to see happen. And we, most of us on council have been dealing with this for at least a couple of years with the dispensary issue. And it was surprising when that issue first started, the folks who were proposing dispensaries had no experience in dispensaries at all. It was just, I haven't opened a dispensary, I was running a auto shop, the week before I wanted to open a dispensary. And it was very unprofessional. We had a lot of questions about who these operators were. It's a lot different now. The folks that are coming in with these licenses or development agreements are very professional, they have business plans, very well-thought-out businesses. And so we've dealt with all the issues over the years, including the health of our citizens, which is one of our main mandates to help protect. We've looked at image, what is due to the image of the city. And as Councilmember Ledesma discussed in the development agreements, we have limitations on signage that you can't refer to cannabis in any manner, and that's one of the conditions of one of these development permits. We also, we just heard, approved an ordinance that deals with the zoning of this. So we wanted to make sure that these were in the least impactful areas to residents and other businesses. So it's not just this one, but the others that are coming up tonight. And the ones that's already in operation are in areas where it's as least impactful as we could find in the city to be able to do this. And also, you know, we looked at the safety and we had the similar questions, I think, that some of the speakers had, you know, is this going to bring in crime? Is it cash business? How do we monitor that? And so what we've done in these development agreements is make sure that before they can get into operation, they have a security plan that's agreeable. So, and unless that can be negotiated, I don't think they're going to be able to operate. So there's still a lot of hooks that we have in order to get this thing the way we want to see it. And the final point is, so far, we're not allowing any retail sales, no dispensaries in West Sacramento, and that's not changing with this item or any of the other items on the agenda. So I think our staff has done a good job at kind of refining this down. And I appreciate the folks that come out and talk about this. But the idea of these particular types of business, which is wholesale, transportation, and this particular one is wholesale and logistics and distribution, these are basically going to be nondescript, nondescript businesses in light industrial areas. And you shouldn't be able to tell what it is from driving by. No public's going to be coming in and out of it, just either folks that are working with the, as agents or vendors for the business or the employees themselves. So it's not like there's going to be a storefront, you'll see people rummaging around, that type of thing. So I think we've been very careful to really clamp down on these types of businesses here. And I'm supportive of moving on forward. All right. So we've had our comments. Now we have, we have the motion then.
I think you have a motion, but I will make a motion to approve the recommended actions.
Okay. Got a second? Got a motion made and seconded, all in papers, the aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, hearing that motion passes. Thank you. What's that? Oh, and I need to inform the audience, the second reading of the ordinance 17-19 is tentatively scheduled for December 13th, 2017. Thank you. All right. Onto item 14, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinances 17-20, 17-21, and 17-22 approving the development agreements between the city and AEH Tech, Inc., DVA Nature's Market at 2424 Del Monte Street pertaining to wholesale cannabis, logistics, distribution, transportation, cannabis indoor commercial cultivation, and cannabis manufacturing.
Nature's Market is proposing to operate a cannabis distribution, cannabis manufacturing, and cannabis indoor commercial cultivation facility at 2424 Del Monte Street. The Planning Commission approved the conditional use permits for these separate and distinct uses at the October 19th Planning Commission meeting and also recommended that City Council approve the development agreements tonight via the resolution 17-19, 17-20, and 17-21 PC. This business is a little unique compared to other cannabis businesses that have come before you in that it's proximity to Westmore Oaks Elementary School. The school is on a fairly large site and the playground and the fields, the baseball fields are within 600 feet of this site. The Planning Commission considered this and approved the conditional use permits with a few findings. And these are that there are multiple physical barriers in between this site and the school property. There's a train track and then there's also some industrial buildings. Also, another finding Planning Commission made is that the distance to get to this facility from the school or vice versa by walking or car or biking is more than 600 feet. You'd have to go all the way down and around, you couldn't go straight over because of those physical barriers. And then also, there's no residential to the west of 2424 Del Monte Street. It's all, it's in an industrial park or industrial area, so there would be no children commuting to school or going past this facility because it's an industrial area. So the Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit. And then tonight before you is a development agreement. Like the last item, there are a few key provisions, one of them being the safety and security plan that they will be having to work with police on. They can't have any exterior signage on the building or on the vehicles. And then the business will be required to provide city quarterly payments of their gross revenue. For the distribution, it's two and a half percent. And then for the manufacturing and cultivation, it's five percent of their gross sales for the first 50 million in revenue. And then after that, it's two and a half percent. In keeping with council's previous direction and the approved cannabis-related municipal code amendments, the recommendation by staff is to approve the three separate development agreements via the implementing ordinance 17-20, 17-21, and 17-22. With that, I'll close my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant is also here in attendance tonight to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Sandeep.
Thank you for the presentation. A quick question. The Washington Unified School District was notified and did not, did not have interface with the city or Planning Commission.
Correct. They were notified with the Planning Commission public hearing and this meeting tonight. We did not receive any public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ledesma or Councilmember Roscoe? Yeah, just back on the issue, because I noticed, I know the Planning Commission kind of beat this one to death around the proximity of the school, but, so I know that corner of the school is the ball field. Is there, the train tracks are there, so what you're saying is the 600 feet to the site is basically streetwise from more than 600 feet. Where are you measuring that from, just so I'm clear?
So we measured from the edge of the property line, so the edge of 2424 Del Monte and the edge of the school property site. And that's a fairly large site. So if you measure in between those two, it's about 400 feet. And the state does have the requirement for 600 feet unless the local agency approves otherwise, which the Planning Commission.
Right. So we're saying it's more than 600 feet to get there by any way paved surface?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, because of the train track which kind of curves by it, no one's going to use that as an open access and there's a property there.
Right. You can't walk, it's not 600 feet walking-wise, you have to go all the way down and around.
That's what I thought. Okay. I just wanted to be clear and that was what I'm looking at in terms of the mapping. And, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Now, this business proposes an indoor cultivation component. Have there been any questions about odorous emissions that can escape this type of facility?
The Planning Commission also made a finding as part of the motion that the odor won't be a factor because of the air filtration that will be involved at this facility. The applicant can maybe address other measures that they would use to make sure that the odor doesn't escape the facility.
Is the applicant here to respond to that question?
They're here, yeah.
Or maybe staff can get it.
Oh, yeah. I would just like to hear, you know, what types of measures are being taken to protect the community from any type of odors that might be in that particular area given its proximity.
Yeah, they'll have to have ventilation and the scrubbers to make sure the odor doesn't get out of the facility. And the Planning Commission did review this and that was one of the findings that one of the Planning Commission made is that because, that they can go within that 600 feet with, because of, they're not going to have any odor because of the filtration.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The, yeah, I think my concern was similar to the other council members on the location approximated to the school. But, so on the safety plan, if there, a problem does develop, I'm not sure what the problem would be with the school, because I think this particular facility is not open to the public, there's really no public face to it, only employees or vendors are going in and out of this place. So even if someone was able to walk up to there, it would be just another building like any other in this area. But in the event of some issue, maybe it's an odor issue or something, is there something that allows us to go back and look at the safety plan and use? Because I think the safety plan kind of looks like it's more safety of the site. It's not really safety of the neighborhood, I think is the focus of this. Or can that extend to maybe neighborhood safety to find somebody to come back in and deal with that?
Yeah, the safety and security plan is developed with the police department. In terms of, if anything comes up after they're already operating, we would want to work with them to alleviate those problems.
Yes, the development agreement specifically provides for annual reviews of the safety and security plan or other times as requested by either party. That's on page 10 of the development agreement.
Yeah, I saw that. And then it's up to the parties to reasonably negotiate amendments to that, it looks like.
But paramount concern is the last part, the facility must be operated at all times in a manner that ensures safety and security of the public and physical security of the facility and products.
Okay.
So if the city had any concerns about that, obviously, we would work with the applicant or the applicant to make sure that those are corrected, but in the end, if we were unable to do that, it would be a basis for termination.
Okay. So it looks like we'll at least be monitoring that then. I mean, it looks like everybody knows that this is an issue in this area. And in terms of the other businesses around here, do you know the nature of those around the elementary school?
Yeah, so this area is all industrial areas. The school backs up to existing industrial uses and also the freeway. This is right next door to a few of the breweries in town. All industrial uses surrounding this property.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any further questions, or comments? It looks like we do have a public hearing on this matter. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Any folks who'd like to speak on this, all right, please come up. So again, try and limit your comments to three minutes if you can.
Mr. Mayor and the council members, my name is Coret Yan Ling. I also live in West Sacramento. So I heard like Mr. Mayor and one of the council members talking about the security concerns of these cannabis, since it's so close to where we live. And what I heard is you acknowledged the security concern and your measure is to add some term of no signs to the agreement with these business. But this is 2017. We find this area is doing something, not from signs only. We use Twitters, Facebook, internet, Google Maps, you name it. So those terms will not help a lot. So people will find in West Sacramento, today, in this area only, we're talking about four different addresses. In item number six, we see the address 3911 West Capitol Avenue. In item 13, another address in West Capitol Avenue. And item 14 and agenda 15, totally four different locations about cannabis. And how big is the city of West Sac? It's not that big. So I don't know what's going on here, to be honest. Sorry for my being straightforward. I'm trying to be as open as I could. So we all have kids. I'm not talking about whether it's legal or not. It is legal in California. I'm adjusting to this. I have already adjusted to this. But we have a choice not to have so many of cannabis in this small town of West Sacramento. We don't have to. We have a choice. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, any further speakers on this item? Yes, please come up.
I just want to add a couple of points to what I just heard. First, to in response to early comments, yeah, we are all aware, this is not for retail sales. It's not for dispensary, it's distribution and cultivation. So that, that doesn't make us worry less, to be honestly. And I'm wondering, why do you guys say there's no energy impact, environmental impact? Where's the sequels study? Is there any? Indoor cultivation will consume a large amount of electricity. I mean, where's the study? And to quantify, what action are you taking? Taking the side just mentioned here, I think it's ridiculous, in my opinion. I think I'm an engineer, environmental engineer, and I think I'm in the wrong business. I didn't know, I didn't know that a law, Proposition 64, can be interpreted any way you want. Does the law says, oh, 600 feet walking distance? I'm, 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 I have no knowledge and no background, you know. I'm...I have no knowledge and no background, you know. I don't really understand. I didn't see that in the law wording. I only see six hundred feet, and this is under six hundred feet. As to how to get there, road always change. I'm also have the transportation background. We develop road all the time, and add on pedestrian roads, sidewalks, to promote public transit and pedestrian walk and bicycle use. So are you going to say that what...that was a fixed distance, okay? This only thing that didn't change is it's under six hundred feet? And last point is that, we got notified about this public hearing. Not all of us get notified. It's by word, okay? Only selected, I don't know what's the criteria, selected residents get a letter. And when you guys saying, yes, we notified the school district and they made no comment, honestly, I'm wondering, did they? Did they show up because they did have no objection, or did they show up because they probably overlooked or didn't receive the mail at all? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything further in the public hearing? All right, CNN will close the public hearing and back to council for deliberation comments.
Yeah, I do have one, just kind of follow-up comment as I'm reviewing some of the development agreement and other material. I think it is an important part of, staff can work with the applicant as they go forward. And where does things like air handlers and scrubbing devices fall into the jurisdiction of our development agreement ordinances? I don't see where it's in there, and maybe it's under the security plan of just general health of it.
I believe the answer is it's in the conditional use permit.
Is it?
It's not in the development agreement, per se. But it's in the zoning ordinance.
It's in the municipal code, and one of the most recently adopted ordinances. They have to...odor control is in there.
Okay. Yeah, it's just not, again, because we're not looking at the specific ordinances or the actual condition use permit. I mean, I just want to make sure we have the hook as we go through, as they go through build-out, that we're keeping an eye on that. That's been made pretty clear, because this is indoor cultivation, and I want to make sure that that is there, so.
Seamus, isn't the applicant here today?
They are here, yeah.
Well, it might make sense to hear from the applicant.
If they want to speak.
Yeah, they have another facility in the state, and this is their investment. Are they going to speak on this one?
Yeah. How are you doing? Cameron McGonagall, VP of Engineering.
And Mayron McGonagall, CEO of Nature's Market. I mean, I just kind of thank you all for your time, number one, but just to preface, you know, we're a group of, just like any other business, we're professionals. You know, most of our team are a team of PhDs, scientists, lawyers. We take this very seriously, just like we're building a pharmaceutical facility. So it's not, I know it's, I think a lot of the public perception, a lot of it has to do with it being new. I mean, when you think of cannabis, you think of something very different for most people that are newer to the industry, and even myself, I'm not, I was not ever a consumer of the product, but I have learned with my background in healthcare, all the therapeutic benefits of it. You know, we're actually in contract with University of California doing research with cannabis, and yes, while, I mean, there's concerns with all drugs, including caffeine and coffee, it is, you know, as I think most people have kind of addressed here, it's not like, you know, some of the, I think the knowledge can help a lot with that. But first off, I'll let Cameron, who can speak on the odor control.
Yeah, I come from a background in the petrochemical industry. I'm a mechanical engineer. Did about seven years of environmental service work, emergency response all over the US and Canada. And one of the big things that we did with, you know, pipeline vapors from methane and others, is carbon treatment with carbon filters. But with the cultivation in particular, these are all closed-loop recirculating systems with air filters, so you're not going to have any of these odors going outside. You can walk, especially if it's done right, the way that we plan to do, you can walk in front of these buildings, and you won't even know what's going on inside there. And our property has a huge buffer zone with fencing, so you're not going to be able to get up that close, and actually, even if there were odors, there's still that buffer zone, but...
Yeah, and it's, I mean, like Cameron is saying, it's a six-acre facility, it's, you know, completely secure. It used to be a former beer distribution facility, so it's not, obviously, an industrial area, but as he's saying, I'll second that, you could walk up to the building right next to it, and you'd have no idea what's inside. And with everything that we do, we want to use the latest and the best technology, from everything from manufacturing, cultivation, to even our IT. So we are on up and up in the technology date, even with his background as well. Should satisfy any concerns related to that.
Yeah, the biggest thing is it's a closed-loop recirculation, so you're not going to have odors going out. You know, it's all contained with inside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right, any questions?
I just want to thank you for your input, and I just want to make sure that, call this out to staff, only just as these projects come back, as you pointed out, the condition use permit or the ordinance, we count on the folks behind the counter that will be working with this, as they go through their build-out to really catch these things. And it's one thing for us to be up here citing the documents that codify our intent and what we want to have happen, and we really entrust staff to be monitoring, managing, and enforcing that as it comes through. So coming from the Planning Commission, that was always the, as David Tilly knows, that was always my thing. We put all this work into design guidelines and these things, and we want to make sure staff has those, so it's fully clear what we intend on this stuff. So I appreciate the applicant's comments, and when they come to the table with their actual building plans, it's trust but verify, and I'm asking staff to make sure we verify that, so thank you.
All right, just a couple of quick ones. There was a SEQA question on this. Is there a very non-technical way that you can address that? Because we are being requested to make a ruling on SEQA exemption.
There is an exemption from SEQA for existing buildings, so moving into an existing building. So they're going to be moving into an existing building and doing tenant improvements, and there is an exemption in that from SEQA.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I think the only other issue is the, I think we brought up the public hearing that wasn't under notice, but I think we've, I don't think we've had issues with our public notice. It happens on occasion when there's issues of controversy, people hear about it through word of mouth, because there's really not, the way communication is in West Sacramento, there's so many different avenues on how to get this out. It's tough to make sure everybody knows everything that's going on all the time, but it appears that we at least had proper public notice on this particular matter. So we've got any further deliberations or a motion on this item?
I'll move ahead.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. All right, and to inform the audience that the next reading, or the second reading and adoption of ordinances seventeen twenty, seventy dash twenty-one, and seventeen twenty-two are tentatively scheduled for December thirteenth, the next time this will come up. All right, thank you. All right, on to item number fifteen, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinances seventeen dash twenty-three, seventeen dash twenty-four, and seventeen dash twenty-five regarding development agreements with Sierra Gold Extracts LLC for wholesale cannabis logistics, distribution, transportation, cannabis manufacturing, and cannabis indoor commercial cultivation at thirty-nine seventy Commerce Drive.
Good evening again. Tonight before you is Sierra Gold Extracts LLC. They are requesting approval for three separate and distinct DAs, one for distribution, manufacturing, and indoor cultivation. It's at thirty-nine seventy Commerce Drive. It's west of the I-80 Overpass, surrounded by completely industrial uses and the Union Pacific Railroad to the north. It's an existing thirty thousand square foot building in the M1 Zone. I did receive a phone call from the property owner to the south. His main concern was dispensary and retail. I informed him that wasn't a part of the project, and after hearing what the project was about, was fine with what was being proposed. And I did inform him about this meeting, should he wish to attend. As previous projects, I contacted police and fire. We do a walkthrough onsite with each of the applicants to go through the security measures, hitting on basically whatever their request is, distribution or cultivation and thereabouts, and how best to provide safety and security in the building as well as to the exterior of the building. Both have, police and fire reviewed the project, have no concerns with the proposal as proposed. The security plan will be required to be reviewed and approved prior to any issuance of building permits. That would go forward to all the aforementioned projects as well. The project has the same conditions, and the deal points is established in the DA with the previous projects. Those will be moving forward. As we talked about, the security plan will be annually reviewed or as deemed necessary by staff or the applicant. This project also was reviewed at the City Council, the Planning Commission, excuse me, on October nineteenth. They approved the three use permits, distinct use permits for them, and recommended the DA approval to the city council. The DA highlights, as Seamus mentioned before, has a revenue-sharing component, it has a safety, security plan annually reviewed, and any signage, any moniker of any kind is not permitted whatsoever. The applicant has reviewed the proposal for the development agreement, the deal points, and the use permit, and has complete agreements of the project as recommended and recently approved by the Planning Commission. They are in the audience as well. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
All right, questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you. All right, so this matter does require a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing, and any folks in the audience who'd like to talk on this item, please come forward. Please come forward. All right, again, if you can, hold your comments to three minutes.
Early, I might have missed a part of certain answers to my coming questions, because I was not in the first part of this hearing. And I didn't hear anything about, well, you said, or in this part, you said something like, this is going, you're going to do wholesale business cannabis. And what is the transaction format? You have to use either cash or banks. From what I know, no bank right now wants to take the risk of doing this business. And then for cash, okay, where there is a cash, there's going to be magnets for criminal acts. And then what to cope with this increasing crime? A few days ago, I think last Wednesday, I was stopping by the clubhouse doorside. I overheard something like, oh, the city's crime rate is decreasing. And so, well, we take a lot of things granted, for granted. We really live in a pretty safe neighborhood. But things would be different if we have this kind of thing around our city, or our city is surrounded by all those kind of things. And so far, what I heard about how to deal with this crime is we send more policemen. That's it. And that means, that indicates we're going to have increased crime rate here, and we don't want our city to be known as a high rate of crime. And so nobody wants to like to stay or to move into the city. This Saturday, I met a neighbor just, who just moved out of South Sacramento. Well, it is known, right? Everybody knows why he moves out of there and stay and moved in into this city. Of course, he told me, he's very surprised that our city is going after certain thing that nobody else wants to do it. And of course, he doesn't want to move out of this city because of the same deteriorations in the neighborhood. So we got to think about it, and we do not want to, something to be happening, and then we start to think, and we pound on the question, why? Why all this? Why we have to take this action? Why we have to implement this thing? Why we have to deploy this kind of thing? We would think, whatever we've been doing outweigh, whether they really outweigh all but cash. Thank you.
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record? Ma'am?
Oh, by the way, I live in, very close to clubhouse. My name is Fang Wu.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments on this item?
I'm Ken Wu. I'm moving to the city because I love it, safe. I'm moving here two thousand and eight. I enjoy my neighborhood. All I heard is my community getting better and better and better. Now, we welcome some business nobody else wants. I'm logistic. I work in a warehouse. I inspect chain. I know exactly what happened in the warehouse, in the supply chain, how the goods comes in, how it gets out. And now, some discrepancy in the inventory count. So it's not what we're looking on the book for the warehouse, it's not accurate. Even one percent discrepancy can our city afford it. So looking for wells, I believe is one development plant close to Stone Gate Elementary School. Only thing I know is that two hundred eighty-eight students over there. In the distance, seven minutes, something happened, how many policemen we have? How many firefighters we have? So at our children's expense, for the cash business, who know exactly business, what's the value they have it? So mayor, you coming over there and say, hey, guy, what's today's total sale? Give me the true number. So because I'm going to collect you two point five percent. So you send CPA over there to count the cash, or they send policemen over there to watch what they're doing, or I just target give you to shipping slip. So all I care about is my kids. All I care about is student. So you put the facility seven minutes from Stone Gate, so I would say public hearing for all the neighborhood. So so far, only one letter sent it over to, I asked all my friend, hundred, one letter from the city. So that's called public hearing? So that's all my question. So think about your children. That's all I care about.
Thank you. All right, any further comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Edith Yvette Gonzalez. I am also a resident here of West Sacramento, Bridgeway Lakes, to be more specific. I wanted to come address the council and congratulate you guys for approving this ordinance. Me and my family are all for it. I also have a two-year-old sister at home, or a three-year-old, and I don't think it's going to increase any crime rate, crime rates at all. Studies actually indicate that recreational marijuana industry has not caused increases in violent crime, and that a well-regulated industry can instead decrease crime rates by curtailing black market cartels. So I thank you for all your hard work, and I'm totally for it.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Dear other council members, my name is Jiang Wu. I'm an epidemiologist and senior analyst, and I also used to be a researcher at the University of California, UC Davis, at the Department of Mental Health and Psychiatry. So I'd like to answer that lady's question. If children use marijuana, it will increase the opportunity for the kids to use drug in the future. So it did impact. Secondly, I feel very... Secondly, I'm, 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 I feel very funny to hear a story about the transportation for any company without know any signs to run business. As that gentleman mentioned, that now, you know, we have so many internet, you know, everything tweet, we cannot just cover our eyes and pretend we cannot hear, we cannot see anything. Even though, I believe, if city approve the, the permit for this company to, you know, to business over here, it will give kids the impression that the city encourage kids, even though I don't think so, but I think that's an effect. A lot of thing, I think, I'm very proud of this city. I, I appreciate the councilman's great job, but I think when you work on these projects, besides consider law, you also consider moral, also consider what kind of benefits you can bring to the people, what any negative impact to the people. Even though now you can increase some city revenue, you can have some money, but consider how much policeman you have to, to employ to, you know, increase security. How if some kids, some children have impact by, you know, marijuana or use drug? So for his whole life, how much the cost we will, how to spend on them? So I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I really suggest, besides you say, oh, we already did this procedure or that procedure, we need to consider seriously. I love this city. I love West Sacramento. I'm proud of it, but I wish, when I introduce this beautiful, beautiful city, I introduce that's a city of West Sacramento, rather than, oh, that's a city of marijuana. So, when I mentioned, when we saw the pictures, I, of our honorable council members, I would like to treat this seriously. Not just say, this, this gentleman say, oh, that's okay, we have advanced technology to make sure it's safe. Can you guarantee that's safe? That's a new business. So it's not material. So I wish you can treat it seriously. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further comments from the public?
My name is Nancy Wu. I'm a long-term resident of West Sacramento, Iowa UC Davis Medical Center. I really have concern the environment problem. If we have three company opening in our small town, do we, every day we smell the, the stinky odor all the time? If one of the company explosion, probably our small city will be destroyed. So I don't like this kind of company near my, my residence. Those three men just mentioned, oh, this is far away from residence. As I know, every day I drive from industry, I did, I deceased several elementary school around this area. So that's, I feel really uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please come forward.
My name is David An. I'm working for the state of California General Services. I only have one request. I read the agenda, the company, they request waive their, the survey for the, this kind of facility, effect to our environment. This is a very complex problem, like a lot of people, we can continue debate for a lot of days. So the way you prove your point, you had to get some real solid statistics and evidence, so the survey cannot waive, that's my point. I really appreciate the, our mayor, Christopher, and the council members. In last, I moved to here about 10 years, you did really good job for our West Sacramento security. I'm proud to be the resident here. I just want, we continue our, in the past, we, you know, should continue promote our education, our infrastructure, like we did in last past, you know? Maybe we didn't need the money, why we have to let this company come here? We had to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Guo Jianlin, so my second time to speak. So I just want to be brief this time, talking about the odor problem. I work for a wastewater treatment plant, and over there, we have all kinds of most advanced technology to remove the odors. Nobody likes those kind of odors from the wastewater. So we have like a wet scrubber technology, dry scrubber technology, all kinds of filters. And I heard the applicants talking about their measure, their approach to remove odor from the, like, growing. So all I heard is just filters, filters, filters. I cannot imagine like this technology will keep all odor inside. That's not gonna happen. I have a PhD degree in electrical engineering, mechanic, master degree in mechanical engineering, and I'm a registered engineer in California, and I have more than 10 years of experience. I know technology is not that good. Every day, we're working really hard to improve all these technology, but we, nobody I know dare to say with just the filters, you can constrain all those odors inside the wall. Having said that, in the future, the technology may be advanced to that level to contain maybe like 99.9% of the odor, but this, at this time, this not happening. And to us, it's risky. And talking about that facility so close to the elementary school, I just cannot imagine like the technology, the current technology is good enough to remove odors enough, and like not have any signs. Nobody talks in Twitter, Facebook about this. So no kids in the school will see, oh, what's that? Why it has some strange smell? Please think about it again. The technologies, the countermeasures, the approaches to reduce or mitigate those concerns, security concerns, odor concerns, possible crime rate concerns, possible like extra spending for the police staff. So if we have limited police staff, then we have to, this is pretty much like increase the burden on our police crew, and put them at the risk also. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Come forward.
I just want to add first, a risk is a risk is, with all responsible effort, we tried, it still exists. We cannot eliminate it to zero. That's why it's a risk. Before the fire in Bay Area caused by PG&E, no reason know they are out of compliance on the book. It's after that we discover. So who is responsible? So for El Paso Canyon's natural gas leak, if prior to this thing happened, how many people is checking? Whether they are still in plants? The damage was made. Discovery fact only come out later. For the thing you just agreed and passed about the distribution center, that's 400 feet. Imagine scenario, what if that's the same fire station? If the fire broke out, how fast can your kids run? And I want to ask, the sequel analysis is, is waived, yes, but this, what's the purpose of public agency that's responsible? You are talking to represent our benefit, the public's benefit, not talking to represent the applicant or the company's benefit. It's waived for their benefit, then who is to make sure that the sequel process now waived, that this distribution center environmentally will cause no impact, negative impact to the community? Don't you, as a resident, also curious about that? When you see waived it, don't you want to study that for yourself first? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further comments? Forward.
Hello, city council, and thank you. My name is Evelyn Marquez. I am a commercial broker, and I'm also a part of several boards for Sacramento City for one of the P-bids, floor and road P-bid. And I'm also secretary for the Board of NAREB, which is the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals. And I'm also a resident of West Sacramento. I live in the Southport area, to be more specific. And I do see the need that the city has as far as raising revenue. I understand we are now changing the whole riverfront, and I'm very excited about that. It's bringing a lot of new investors to the area, more businesses. It's gonna definitely help the city raising revenue. I really am for this. I do not smoke anything, marijuana or anything. I don't do drugs, and at one point, I did not support this at all, and I can't stand the smell. However, I got educated, because I have a lot of investors, and I have represented some clients and sold some warehouses in the Green Zone in Sacramento area. Once I got informed and educated, I was able to see how the odor can be controlled with the different techniques, or technology and equipment they have, such as carbon filters, and there's other systems they may use. So it was amazing to go to our facility that is actually already working and see that there was actually no smell. I could be standing inside the facility and not smell it. And I can't stand the smell. I don't smoke, and that was something that was like, I could smell a mile away if I'm out like in a park, or someone's doing it and they're not supposed to. And that really bothered me. And seeing the professional facility set up, I was very surprised to see that there was actually no smell. I understand the other citizens' concerns and about that one area close to the school, but if it has no signage and it's gated, and there's kids in the school, they have no reason even be asking what's in that building. Just like, you know, you go by, drive, drive by a liquor store, you're not gonna be, oh, what's in there? Alcohol, you know, it's illegal, we can't drink. But my point is that I believe the city will be moving forward with something like this as far as revenue, and we definitely do need it to bring more businesses to the city. And so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further, speakers, public, come forward.
Since I mentioned, I'm Ken Wu, I mentioned I'm a logistic professional, in logistic for more than 15 years.
Have you spoken already?
So I'm Ken Wu.
Have you spoken already on this item, though?
Um, I just, my second time, I just want to mention, answer one question about just my, can I speak?
Oh, yeah, I mean, have you spoken already on this item, though? Yeah, first time? Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So I wanna make sure kid is safe. So if the truck is to pick it up from the whatever facility nearby the school, the truck know what exactly they carry, because the benefit. By law, they have that one, so they all know what they're transport. So if something happen, I just want our kids safe in this community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any further comments on public hearing? All right, seeing none, close the public hearing, and then back to council for deliberation or comments or questions?
I have a quick, the applicant's here? Oh, great. I have a question for you about the security, the questions that've come up about that, and also the holding in the odors. Could you talk about?
Absolutely, absolutely. To get there, just let me say, it's an honor to be here. I really commend the city of West Sacramento as being a good influence on this industry. You know, it's great to be part of the process and hear concerns from the public. These are concerns of the public throughout the state of California. What's important, as we come out of prohibition and into a regulated environment, is that cities like the city of West Sacramento, that are, are very well adapted and have put in so much work, and it's been such a pleasure to deal with staff and the work involved, and it's reflected in the development agreements. And the development agreements really, along with the ordinances, address, address the issues that are raised by, by the public. And, and, and just to get back to that on the security and the odor measures, okay? And this, some of this goes to experience as well. So, you know, my background has been an attorney for the last 17 years, and representing millions of people in consumer class actions. So I'm very attuned to fiduciary responsibilities to large groups of people, and to the rights of consumers to be receiving high-quality product with clear disclosures. Now, my best friend and roommate in college at UC Davis is here, and my partner, Ryan Matsua. And, and when I went to go be an attorney, Ryan went to go work for one of the largest pharmaceutical manufacturing facilities in the world. And, and with that came an enormous amount of education and knowledge of standard operating procedures, and, and it's, we have a unique skill set to adapt to the regulations. And a lot of what I'm hearing today is the ability to track product, to track money, right? And the state has mandated seed-to-sale tracking. And, you know, over a year ago, through another company that we own, and I'm chairman of a company called Critical Mind, and over a year ago, we were issued a license and a permit from the city of Adelanta. And we developed that facility, and we have our certificate of occupancy, and we've been operating out of that facility. So we've had the opportunity to go through this before, both on the tracking, both on the security measures to be implemented. And the product from the licensed commercial growers who we were to deal with, for example, the by-product to manufacture and extract, that is all tracked, and it's the facility through the whole process and through every machine, really. So from that standpoint, we have security relating to the product itself, right? And the ability, so that there's no slippage, there's no leakage, because we track every, to the, you know, to the milligram, right, of every product. So that's the product security. Now, with regard to the cash security, right? The cash transactions relating to this industry will not occur in West Sacramento. They will not occur at the manufacturing facility where we are manufacturing, cultivating, and distributing. They will occur elsewhere. The point of, of transaction at the grows or at the dispensaries, where the, to the extent it's cash, where cash is exchanged. It's not always cash that's exchanged, that's, that's important to note. And there are institutions that are moving towards dealing in this industry. So without getting into extensive detail as to how the cash is processed, we have worked with the, with the city law enforcement to make sure that we have the most advanced security measures in place. We do have 24-hour security on premises. So without the signage and with 24-hour security on, on premises, there's, there's significant deterrent from people just to start snooping around, figure out what you have going on in there. With regard to the, the air quality and the odors, we can confirm, as has, it's been spoken to throughout, that in this industry, it is very common to, well, let's, let's go back a second. Now, this medical cannabis industry, the medical marijuana industry's been around for 20-plus years in this state. There's been indoor grows in the state for, for over a decade, and, and there's been extraordinary technological advances in the cultivation of cannabis, right? So the, the filtration systems through the HVAC units, the closed-loop ventilation systems, you know, it's the highest technology that can be employed to ensure that the odors don't, don't escape the, the building. But just to close with, you know, we hear talk about how we grew up in the 80s, say no to drugs, right? We hear talk of morals and ethics, right? And, and just as this city is becoming a good influence on the state by acting and not being passive, you know, as have we, and we, we really feel like we're good influence on this industry by being leaders in the industry, by going through the proper compliance and regulatory schemes that's out, and, you know, this is a tough industry, and it's important to have skilled individuals that have skill sets that are being brought in from other industries and adopted here as we come out of the as we come out of the prohibition and into this regulated environment. And if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so.
I'd actually like to.
Yes, please.
I'd actually like to hear from our deputy chief, Strange, to address some of the comments that folks had with respect to overarching issues with security and whether or not the police department has any concerns over the security measures and the safety plans that are being proposed.
I can speak to the process to this point with any of these proposals for marijuana businesses that have come forward, is we're part of a comprehensive review team with our partners at different departments in the city that look at things from the safety perspective, specifically the safety and security plans, those plan reviews, crime prevention for environmental design measures, all those things that, by the compliance, even with our suggestions, is making these plans that we see before us as they come through, they're meeting the measures of compliance that we are asking for, that we think will mitigate any of the public safety risk, because we wouldn't, we're not going to give them a pass like we would, you know, we wouldn't do that with any business. And so with this business structure, we're looking at that through that similar lens, not wanting to have a bad industry or a bad business player in our community that's going to actually create public safety issues. So that, those considerations have been absolutely taken into account through that process.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to add that in my previous comments, I had mentioned that I had toured a facility, and there were a lot of, that experience was very informative. I will attest that I don't recall smelling any odors, and I think I was looking for some, frankly, because I wanted to prove my suspicions right, that this was not something that, oh, I was, I had prejudices, let's put it that way, and I want to confirm those prejudices. But I, my experience proved otherwise. And I also wanted to address a concern that I should have addressed in my initial comments, which, one of the comments that I've made in two separate meetings is the risk of marijuana to vulnerable populations, including children and pregnant women and youth. And, you know, this conversation will not, you know, happen tonight with the development agreements, but I really would like our city to be on the forefront of educating youth and families in our community as to the proper uses of cannabis so that they could, it could be used in a manner that does not put our community in harm's way and that we could ameliorate, hopefully, our fears. There's never going to be, well, at least in my opinion, a perfect fix. For years, and since my grandparents were young, I mean, kids get access to things they're not supposed to have access to. But to the extent that we could make our community aware and do our best to be leaders in this industry as we are tonight, in educating our community, I think that that's another thing we can do.
Thank you. That's Mary Liza.
Thank you. So this is the, you know, I'll extend to this agenda item some of the same thoughts as my previous agenda items, which is around how we manage and verify and make sure that we are holding each one of these, I don't know if I'm talking about this applicant, but each one of them to the standard intent that we have laid out and have been articulated tonight around safety, security, odor, security down the line. It's just the imperative of that is there. This is a new industry, and I, again, appreciate the comments tonight from the public who have concerns around the industry for a lot of the reasons we've already articulated just on the history with this, with cannabis and marijuana. But I think we, as we move forward with this, I heard from the applicant, there you are, that you want to be a leader and it's a partnership, and there will be a partnership as we learn together. But it comes with, you know, from at least my viewpoint, a high degree of accountability and a high degree of verification. We want, we're going into this with what the staff has done for a remarkable job of understanding the industry, looking at ordinances, making sure we can address as many things as we can, and then furthering it with the development agreements that secure, with the applicant, the planning commission has looked at this and weighed in, this is vetted as much as any issue. And we're still have much to learn, and to the staff, I ask that we keep learning. Let's not make this a transaction and we walk away. We need to, as, we have opportunities to learn about new technologies. One of the members of our public talked about their expertise in technology and filtration. We should be aware of those things and not be led by, although they're going to be experts in their field, we need to be aware of what's going on in the industry. This is new. As we have in several other industries that I can think of, we can lean on other cities for what they've learned and what they've done. We've always asked that questions, and we have things come through, what do other cities do, how they approach this? This is going to be different because not many others are at this point. And so as a city and staff and ourselves, is educate ourselves and stay hungry for knowledge so that we can continue to grow and make sure this is on the right track. We can't, somebody had said earlier, there's risk, yes, there's risk in everything we do in the city. We're population of 50,000, plus we have over, I'm going to guess, 4,000, 5,000 businesses in the city, registered, licensed. We do the best we can with ordinances and the laws, be they at the federal, state, or local level, or maritime law, whatever comes our way, trying to regulate them all. And we're human and everything's foolproof, but I know the staff has worked extremely hard to manage this, and I'm confident in going forward with this. But the going forward model is just this, is we've got to keep learning and keep managing it and keep vigilant on making sure that as we continue to grow, we're doing it the right way. So appreciate staff work on this, appreciate the comments from the community, they have been heard, and we'll do the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just a couple points. The, I think some of the comments that some of you all made on just the issue of children and marijuana and usage and that type of thing, that's a much bigger issue than I think we're dealing with now, and that's something the state's going to have to deal with in regulation and enforcement. And of course, we're all concerned about educating the public too about the continued issues revolving, involving the use of marijuana. So those aren't all going away. But these particular facilities, there's no retailers, not going to be any sales in this town at all. And I think through this process, through each of these, we've seen a real orderly process to try to put in place these businesses under our terms, not the state's terms, which I think is huge, because had we not done anything, it would be a completely different story, I think, and there'd be a lot more concern about what's going on here. So I think unless there's any other comments, it looks like we have a motion to be made.
I'll move the recommended action.
Jay?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, on paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? All right, that matter passes. All right, let's see, I'm going to inform the audience that the second readings and adoption of these ordinances, 1723, 1724, and 1725, are tentatively scheduled to come back here on December 13th. All right, thank you all for coming out and speaking. All right, on to item number 16, which is the consideration of award of contract with TPA Construction, Inc., and Kibo Works for the Mill Street Pier Rehabilitation Phase Two Art Installation. Ms. Jacobson.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Just to give you a real brief background on this item, in January of this year, council executed an agreement with Janet Zweig LLC, an artist to design, engineer, and permit Phase Two of the Mill Street Pier improvements, which are art and interpretive elements that are provided in the project scopes of work in the two grant awards that the city received to, for the Mill Street Pier project. The agreement with Janet Zweig LLC provided that she partner with local artists and a structural engineer to fully design, permit the art and interpretive elements, and that the city would complete the contracting and installation with the artist's coordination and oversight. Zweig has partnered with Kibo Works, a local artist, to fabricate the sculptural elements, and Public Works staff has completed the Public Works bidding on the construction elements of the project, and TPA Construction Incorporated was the winning bidder. The Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission heard a presentation on this design on September 25th, and by unanimous vote, recommended to council that it proceed with installation of the work. The artist is here to present the final design tonight. It needs to be completed in the next four months to meet, by March of 2018, in order to meet the grant performance requirements. Staff is making the following recommendations to council to install the Phase Two improvements, that council find that the project is exempt from SEQA analysis under California Code of Regulations Title 14, Chapter 3, Article 19, Sections, and find that Class 1 and Class 3 categorical exemption determinations represent the independent judgment of the city, that council execute a contract with TPA Construction Incorporated in the amount of $178,500 and delegate authority to the city manager or his designated issue contract change orders up to 15%, and that council authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Kibo Works substantially in the form attached for the art sculpture elements in the amount of $85,000, and delegate authority to the city manager or his designated to make non-substantive changes to the contract as approved by the city attorney. I'd like to introduce Janet Zweig so she can present her design. I'm really pleased and excited to have her here, and she's going to be here for a few days working on the design. She has over 24 public art installations around the United States, including a performance space in a prairie on a Kansas City downtown rooftop, a generative sentence sculpture on a wall in downtown Columbus, a memorial in the lawn of Mellon Park in Pittsburgh, a 1,200-foot frieze at the Prince Street subway station in New York, and a system-wide interactive project for 11 light rail stations in Minneapolis that incorporates the work of over 100 Minnesotans. She teaches at the Rhode Island School of Design and at Brown University. Her sculpture and books have been exhibited widely in such places as Brooklyn Museum of Art, Exit Art, New York MoMA PS1 Museum, Walker Arts Center, Cooper Union. She has won many awards, including the Rome Prize Fellowship, NEA Fellowships, and she's had residencies at New York MoMA PS1 Museum and the McDowell Colony. And with that, I'd like to ask Janet to come forward and, can you?
Hello?
Hello.
Happy to be here in West Sacramento. Nice to see you. We have a presentation, so maybe we should, and thank you, Katie, for that great introduction. Can, do you all have the presentation on your screens already? Okay, wonderful. So let's, Katie, I'll just tell you, I'll put my finger up when it's time to go to the next one.
Yeah, let me know when you want to.
Okay, so let's just go to the first. Great, okay. So when I, you know, when I first came here, the river was really low. Actually, this is a photograph from that time when you were having that really drought, your drought phase. And then the next time I came, it was really high. And when I visited this new Riverwalk, I was so drawn to that pier. It's so wonderful. And now that it's been renovated, it's just amazing. So I'm excited to work at that site. The river is this defining feature of your city, and so the goal of this artwork is to make West Sacramento the center of attention in the area. It's to bring the center into West Sacramento, turn the focus there. So, go on to, well, let's stay on that one for a second. So there are two parts to the piece, and they're both about orientation. The orientation is meant for the residents of and visitors to West Sacramento. First, there is a word west, a lighted word, but it's a transparent word, and it's oriented towards West Sacramento. Again, putting people in West Sacramento at the center, as the subject. And the second part are these glittering steel bands on the pylons surrounding the pier that also orient the viewer or the resident to the ebb and flow of the river, the daily, yearly ebb and flow of the river, and also in relation to drought versus rainfall. So this, from across the river, you'll see the word west backwards, and, you know, this is a playful thing, but it acts in a way as an identifying or gateway element. So it's a gateway, you know, from, looking at it from the other side, but it's also a gateway from West Sacramento, or a landmark from West Sacramento. So let's go to the next slide. That's another view. It's hard to see here with the lights on, but go on to the next one. I'm assuming you can see it better on your screens. That's again from across the river. Oh, that's good. That's better. Okay, go ahead. So this is how it works. If you're at the end of the pier, just coming up to the pier, you're looking at the word west, you're the subject, right? You're the subject of the story because you're in West Sacramento. So as you walk down the pier, when you get about halfway, it, I mean, that would be the perfect selfie moment, right? People will have west behind them, reading, right-reading. But as you get halfway, it turns 90 degrees. So although it's turning its back to Sacramento much of the time, in this generous gesture, as you move towards it, in a generous gesture, it turns and shows itself to downtown Sacramento, right-reading. So that's the next, that's, I'm sorry, that was the slide you just saw. So go back one. So that's when it's turned 90 degrees, and you're over here on an angle in downtown Sacramento, and it's, you can see it turn, and it's facing you. Now, you can go to the next one, and there's a couple of reasons for that. First, when you're approaching the end of the pier, this motion detector triggers your presence, so it's almost shy. It turns away from you as you approach it. And then, go on to the next one. When you approach it and it turns, it opens up the vista for you, so it doesn't block anything, and you go to the end. Next. Pardon me? Yeah, sure. So there's just a few more models that we did. Next one. Okay, that's just a drawing showing the size, and it's floating out away from the pier. But when you come to the pier, it's just above the railing, so I think you'll just sense that it's floating out there. Go ahead. And it's transparent. You see through it, and the light's on the inside, so it's this odd, these odd letter forms. It's not floating in that way, it's on a platform, but it's transparent, so you can see, you can, even when you're at the end and you look through it, you can see the shoreline on the other side through it. Okay? There's another rendering of it. So there's two components. There's this moving text, and so there are four hollow letter forms approximately three feet high that spell out the word west. They're elevated and installed on a cantilevered structure at the end of the pier, away from the touch of visitors, you can't reach it or get to it. The letters are seated on a motorized platform that allow two positions that previously described, a motion detector. And then, if you keep going, there are also these stainless steel bands, and the bands have, are every three feet. They're wrapped around all these existing wood pilings, beautiful wood pilings. They're three inches in height and placed They're three inches in height and placed three feet apart vertically, and they're stamped or cut out with the water level number at three-foot increments, starting from the zero baseline of the U.S. Geological Survey Stream Gauge Standard Levels. These bands will be visible as both of, they will be both a visual element and a measuring device. They can see, they can be seen from the pier, the numbers can be read from the pier, but also you can see them from, you can see the bands from across the river, not the numbers, probably, bringing attention to these issues of river tides, drought, and water conservation. You can go on to the next one. And then there'll be this didactic panel at the entrance to the pier, and we're hoping to have a lot of, I mean, I was really surprised that these rivers had tides when I first came here. That's fascinating. And also the dams, you know, letting water in, and every, so there's a yearly change. And I don't know if residents all know this, but certainly visitors don't know it. So this will have a lot of description of the river tides, you know, the dams, the drought and flood conditions, et cetera. And then also it'll have a description of the changing orientation of "west" relative to you, the viewer. So, go to the next one. So we've made some prototypes. Kibo Works has made some prototypes. These are the steel bands, or one steel band, and we're going to play with these tomorrow. And the holes are so that we can put, you know, those, those piers are, those pilings are different diameters, so we can put bolts through at any position and overlap them, cut them and overlap them. And then we have another prototype image. These are some prototypes that are already built. It's one prototype in different light settings, but you can see the play of the way that, you know, when it turns, or when you're looking at it from an angle, you get this really odd... You can still read the W with the light, but it's an odd change of the shape of the letter form. That's actually one of my favorite things about it, is how that W, or how those letters are legible even when tipped sideways. So I think that's the last slide, so I'm happy to ask, answer any questions.
All right. Mr. DeSantis?
Yeah. This is pretty exciting, cool stuff, and I'm vaguely aware of your art in Minneapolis, in fact, because I have colleagues that work in Minneapolis, so I've heard about that before. So I was excited to see, make the connection when I saw your name in the staff report. But just some general feedback, it is, no questions, because I am the probably the least qualified person to ask an artist questions about what they do, and they'll be dumb, stupid, pragmatic, political person-type questions that I won't get into. But the playfulness of this is what's capturing me. You kind of, I was wondering what, in reading the staff report, it's hard to visualize it. And I thought that's what it was doing in terms of allowing people to see it, and then almost a little bit of...
Taking it away.
Not just taking it away, but kind of showing it off, too.
Showing it off, right.
Yeah, so you get there, and then all of a sudden, here we are, me as a person at the end of the pier, and here's the "west" part. And I think there's a little bit of, you put the word "playfulness" on it, and I don't think it's shy at all. I think it's a little bit of who we are, too, as a community. We like to be playful, and we like to, you know, we have a scene around here that's hashtagged quite a bit in our social media, "West Sac, Best Sac." And it sort of has that sort of feel to it, as though like, here we are, and which is why it came to mind when I was reading. I was just hoping to have a demonstration, but to see a little more clearly than what was in the staff report.
Oh, good. You hadn't seen these pictures.
Oh, I saw that, not all of those, but I saw, you know, just a few of them that were in the staff report. So it is really kind of exciting, it'll be exciting to see it actually installed, which curious to see actually how that's done as well. We have, our other piece of public art is kind of being watchful as it gets constructed on the riverfront, too. But this will be a really exciting piece. I was a little kind of wary about how we were gonna add artwork to the pier, you know, just is it going to be a sculpture? It's a little, is it going to be a, how can we do this to make the pier, what it's become? You go out there every now and then, especially in the summertime, people will be kind of sitting there having a sandwich or an apple or something, and it's just a cool place just to go sit for 15, 20 minutes and move on. And so this kind of will add to the little bit of...
I think so.
Mystique of kind of being out there, I think.
I think people will want to have a photograph with it behind them.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, we have now cater art...
Like Hollywood or something.
Yeah. We cater art around the selfie now, don't we? A little bit.
Well, that didn't occur to me when I was thinking of it, but it occurred to me afterwards that you might want to have it behind you, yeah.
Yeah. No, it's really, to me, it's exciting, and I think as the word starts to spread around, and I think it'll just add to sort of that community feeling we have about who we are, just, we want to be identified, West Sac, even at times we disagree, which you may have heard tonight. Everyone's really proud of being a part of West Sacramento, and I think that this has a little bit of playfulness that will be kind of fun to have on the riverfront.
Excellent.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
That's my hope. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for this proposal and for sharing your vision with us. It's been said that by my colleagues and many members of the community that in West Sacramento, its most valuable resource is its people. And I really like how you have "west" pointed inward. This isn't about a show to the world about who we are, this is a, pays homage to who we are and how proud we are as a people to live in this community. And then, once you approach to say, "Here we are," and share that at that point, that's really clever. So thank you. I was, the only other question I had was if, by chance, there were someone who wasn't as kind, would the sign be easy to maintain and repair if there were any issues with damage?
Well, we're working on that. I mean, we're concerned, we're not concerned about that. We're making it easily maintained. So, I mean, Katie might be able to speak to this, but there's, you know, we're...
Janet's required to provide a maintenance plan for the piece, and we're working now still with the fabricator in terms of the varnishing and protection, particularly on the wood elements. And then CFDR has maintenance funds for the work as well, for any annual maintenance on it.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Sandeep.
I love it, too. I think it's really simple, in a way, but also super creative in the movement. So my question was also about maintenance. So it sounds like we'll have a, some kind of a maintenance contract, because it seems...
There's always a maintenance contract for public art, and I always take responsibility for that and try to plan in the making of it to make sure that it's as robust as possible.
Right.
You know, the motion aspect is, the way Kibo Works has engineered that is so elegantly simple, and it's also a kind of industrial item that's very robust. And he's, you know, made so many pieces outdoors, and I have great faith in the fabricator, artist slash fabricator, so I think it's going to be pretty robust. And, you know, things happen, all kinds of things. Things happen to streetlights. Streetlights have to be maintained, and artwork has to be maintained, but I don't think this is going to be any undue maintenance.
I think it'll really draw people, draw people even more so to the pier. So the drawing in, it looks like there's a kind of a platform that gets built over the river.
Right.
Do you think, thinking back to my youth and how I liked to climb on things, you know, I...
Yeah, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
We're thinking that, well, first, you'd have to climb, I mean, it would be hard to climb, you'd have to climb over the thing and then somehow get down into this other part. But then, even then, you know, we don't want anyone to do that.
Right.
I don't know why they would. I think that would be unusual, I think. But we're thinking of putting bird spikes, you know, on that horizontal, because you won't really see that horizontal.
Right.
So that would keep people, keep birds away, but I think it would keep people away.
Yeah. I think it's going to be so, like, so magnetic that you can imagine someone going, "Hey, I dare you to get in the middle of the W," or something like that.
I don't know, because I have a piece right now on a bridge in Western Pennsylvania, and the letters, those letters, you can actually touch. And I was very concerned about that, so we were like wiggling them, and, you know, we made this special locking system and all kinds of things. And people like it a lot, and they don't touch it. You know, I thought, oh, they're going to, you know, because those are like right here. But they don't. And they can't steal them. It's really clear you can't get them off. Like mostly with letter forms, people want to have them, but these are way too big. The West Sacramento, the westward is, you know, you couldn't take that thing. The smaller ones, I was worried about that, so we made a system so that they couldn't be stolen, but nobody's tried. So this is so much more robust than that. That's actually a more temporary piece. This is, you know, this is really big and heavy, bolted down, far, far away. You'd have to be really determined to crawl out there, and then if you did crawl out there, I don't know what damage you could do to the letters, any more than you could to the bench that's on the, because it's wood, you know, and it's metal. It's not, there's no acrylic or anything in that. It's metal, it's, the light is reflecting on the metal. So it's very, I think it's going to be hard to do any damage to that.
We don't want to. It's so cool. Yeah.
Yeah, I doubt it, but, you know, we're going to, you know, it's far enough away and hard enough to get to, and the little spikes and all that, so I, I think that's about all that can be done.
Has anyone asked about the lighting? We had, I recall, several months ago, a resident, I don't know, maybe I just received a letter, I don't know if my colleagues did, about lighting affecting fish, like on the edge of the river, but it doesn't seem like this is super bright and it's not going down, right?
Yeah, it's not going down.
So, okay. Because the tower bridge is also lit.
That's right.
So we have other things around the river that are lit, but...
Yeah, I think that what we found out is that water, light going down...
Light may not go down straight onto the water.
And it's not, it's going inward.
It's going in, okay.
It's in, and it's reflecting out, outward, too.
And it's a very soft glow.
Okay. Yeah.
Great. It's wonderful. I'm excited. Four months, that's going to be fast.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that's, it's soon. It's a quick turnaround. I'm excited, too. I think it's going to be really, really fun. Thank you.
Yeah, I like the scale and simplicity of it as well. And I had similar concerns about the maintenance, is we don't really have any kinetic art yet in the city, and this is, you know, it's obviously the motorized and a little more maintenance, but I'm glad that you all thought about that.
Whoops.
You've all thought about that, and there's a plan to maintain that. And, yeah, I mean, I, we can't, we're looking at putting public art throughout the city, and it's, we can't really not do it, because I think of vandalism. I mean, vandalism may happen, but, you know, otherwise you just put big steel cubes everywhere and call that art.
That's right.
And then they'll graffiti that, so...
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's, there's really not much you can do except to move forward with this. And, you know, it may get to the point where you have, we've talked about security on that pier anyway. There's more people living down that area, and that helps a lot. So, but I think it's a great project. I think it fits right in.
Wonderful.
If I, quick question, how far out will the letters be? You said it's going to be pretty far away, from the edge of the pier?
We have the number on the slide. It's way too far to reach.
I believe it's 18 feet.
About 18 feet? Wow, okay.
Oh, I was going to say about maintenance, too, is that what I have found is if you have a, someone local who's making the piece, they're always, you know, and Kibo Works is here, so if anything, you know, if anything happens, he'll come right over, I would assume, because he has an interest in having it look, you know, maintained. So if the maker of the piece is local, that's great in terms of maintenance. So I think, I think we've made a good choice that way.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, council...
Actually, I have one more question. Just for clarification, Katie, this, our council action tonight won't have any new funding implications, correct?
Absolutely not. It's fully grant-funded, and it was in our CIP appropriation in 2015, '16.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, so we have the action, the action matter moved, which includes the findings and the authority in the action. Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most in favor, most passed. Thank you very much. All right. On to council calendar.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. Here's a couple of items that are coming up that might be of interest to you. So next week is Thanksgiving, and City Hall and city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday. Next, the following Thursday, November 30th, is the unveiling event for the Dia Subtale Art Sculpture in the Bridge District. That's tentatively scheduled for 5:30. Then on December 1st is our annual community tree lighting at City Hall at 6 o'clock. And December 6th is the police holiday employee recognition ceremony in the Galleria. That's at 5:30.
All right, thank you. City manager report?
As you may have seen today, staff released the announcement that the Sycamore Trail bike pad overcrossing was funded through a grant, cabin trade grant from the Resources Agency. We didn't highlight in the release, because we want to stay humble, but it was the largest grant that was awarded in the state, so it's the 5.1 exceeded anybody else. So we'll move forward on that. The design will come back to the council as we move forward on that. And then also in your mail pack at the fire department, I think the chief is still here, that's the annual report from last year, and that's the year that they got the Class I ISO rating, and the chief's committed to, and the firefighters committed to maintain that level of expertise, so it's a real nice report.
Thank you.
If I may, just a quick ask of the city manager, not anytime soon, but on the Sycamore Trail and project, is there, if you can, offline, just set an item, kind of what the milestones and timing might be for that project?
For the scope, okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The city attorney report?
I have a report.
Okay, staff direction from the council members?
I have something.
All right.
Thank you. Yesterday, I became aware of a grant opportunity for the California Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant Program. This is an opportunity for cities or CBOs to apply for grant funding to, well, to comply for up to $500,000 over a period of two years for programings that address violence and with the goal of reducing violence in cities and adjacent areas. I'd like to put that on calendar for our next meeting for approval by the council of pursuing grant funding by our staff. I think that this is, this could result in programs that would further the policy objectives that have previously been communicated by this council, and I think that if it could lead to expansions of programs that we already have in place, or create new efforts to, you know, for preventative programs for violence, or to curb violence, I should say, then we should definitely put that before us and see what we can get. And I mentioned it tonight just because the timeline is pretty tight. It looks like there's going to have to have some action by staff on December 5th or 11th, so it wouldn't be timely for me to bring it up later, but I'd like to do so now.
All right. Any comments on that?
I just have actually a procedural question related to this, because when I get, when I've gotten these, this is just a serious discussion among us, I typically would send them to the city managers so he's aware. So I don't know what is typical, yeah.
The council member did provide that with me today. I haven't had the chance to meet with staff on it. The intent, we have to take action to do the intent for the grant by December 15th, so the timing of our December 13th meeting would work. So we'll take a look at that and see if we can meet it. If it does, and it's consistent with the direction in terms, particularly on youth outreach, we would propose it on the December 13th meeting.
Okay. So that, so it's typical to give it, to send it to you, and then we can mention it here.
And that's what we received today.
Yeah, okay, okay. Great. I just hope you've done that. Thanks.
All right. So unless there's any comments, otherwise that will be, move forward on that. Thank you. Then future agenda items, is that a future agenda item request?
It is.
All right. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none. All right, so it comes to motions adjourned.
Subsumed.
Being seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most in favor, most... Most passed as were adjourned. Thank you.